Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of your Westland City Council to order. We will begin tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Jim Hart.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Hart, for leading us in the pledge. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Baumann?
Here.
Councilwoman Hart?
Here.
Councilwoman Hornbuckle?
Here.
Councilwoman Radkowski is absent, excused. Councilwoman Wishart?
Here.
Pro Tem Sampi is absent, excused. President McDermott?
Here.
Form is present.
Okay. We will begin tonight's meeting with one alone special announcement and presentation. We're going to be joined by the wonderful Miriam Katie from the Westland Western Wayne Relay for Life with an update on what Relay's doing.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, City Council, everybody that's here today, Deputy Mayor, Fire Police, everyone, we appreciate it. So, I am here to talk about the ending of, it's so hard to believe, the 2025 year is complete, and we, our goal was 50,000, and I'm so thankful that we surpassed that at $51,409.66. So, we were, so we were happy about that. And it's so much, I am telling you, the support of our community, that's what I'm here for too, is to thank the Mayor, the City Administration, the City Council, Fire Police, oh my God, and I don't know, there's not enough words to thank Kyle and Parks and Rec for everything, WLND are always there, I mean, just, I'm telling you, Marketplace, DPS, there's so many people to thank, but we, I also, on behalf of our ELT team, want to say how appreciative that we are of our community and how proud we are to be a part of this community because of their support always. And there's so many relays that don't have the relays anymore because they don't have the support that we do, so, and hence, that's why we updated our name to, you know, Relay for Life Westland, Western Wayne County, so we could include anybody that would like to join us, and it's growing, which is great, but it's really just here to thank you so much for all that, and of course, we're kicking off our 2026 year, it's hard to believe, and we outgrew the City Hall for our Pizza Palooza, so, which is a good thing, of course, as hard as it is to leave City Hall, we are thankful to be able to have it at the Wayne Ford Civic League, it's on November 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and thank you, you know, Jim Hart and Vic and everyone there too, and Linda, that are helping us through this, you know, growing into and supporting us in every way. So, we're hoping that we see lots of you, we of course are having our quarter auction, which is amazing, you know, everybody just loves it, and we're trying to at least get 12 to 15 pizza places there, so you can enjoy some food and the quarter auction. So, I am here for questions, of course, you know, I'll pass out some flyers, I already did to all of you, and go Relay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Miriam. And please, as always, thank the Relay team, I know it's an entire team effort for all the great work and fundraising you guys do throughout the year, so thank you very much to everybody at the Westland Western Wayne County Relay, great job, as always. Okay, that was our lone special announcement and presentation, we will now move on to questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow members of the public at the beginning of the meeting to address the council regarding items that are on tonight's business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion in support from your City Council, is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Mr. Warren.
Good evening. On the new business item two, I'd just like to know that what was the evaluation of the traffic team efforts and why the tremendous $7,000 price increase, so what were they doing, and what are they intend to do with the extra $7,000 per year? Under vouchers, page four, Personnel Department, I don't know whether that's an abbreviation for the old DEI or another abbreviation, but I thought the DEI was done and over with, so why is money still being, if it is the old DEI, why is money still being spent in that area? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone on my right? Comments on the agenda? Anyone on my left? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will close public input on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar, is there a motion? There's a motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Wishart, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to consent calendar? Yes?
I have questions.
Yes, absolutely.
I actually have two questions on two different items. Actually, is that right? Yes. My first question actually is on consent calendar item D. I wanted to, I had asked this question, but I wanted to give the Chair an opportunity to explain how that's, how that's being budgeted, because you've got 131,000, and then of which 3,155 is funded through the Parks and Rec Department, I wanted to give an opportunity for our finance department just to explain how that came about, because it is related to a previous item, so, because I had a question on that.
And you had one more?
And the other one I had questions on was on the item F, through the Chair, I believe that would go to Director Brown, was basically if you could just kind of explain why that, what that's about and why it's good for our community.
So, I'll start through the Chair to the Councilwoman and the rest of the body. The Wayne County Millage money that we receive from the county every other year was set aside, I believe, four or six months ago by you guys through City Council for some Hicks Park upgrades, when going out to bid, the scope of the project was just a little bit higher than the estimated dollar figure, and that grant was for 131,778, the bid came at 134,933, so that overage will be discussed in a budget amendment down the road. This is just basically a notice to you guys stating, and then obviously, it's the contract for K&amp;B to do the work as well.
And then Director Brown, I believe, item F?
Yes, through the Chair, that's a great question, this is one of those occasions where I'm pretty actually happy to answer questions about it. So, what this is, is we currently use Point and Pay for credit card payments for taxes, water bills, permitting, things along those lines, so if you go to our website and make payment online, that's the service that's used. The current service is very dated in terms of look at the website, so this is an opportunity for us to upgrade the website to a cleaner, newer type of look and feel. It also allows us to provide more opportunities for people to pay, so not just using credit cards and electronic checks, you'll also be able to use Apple Pay, Google Pay to make payments online. There's other options that would be available to you, like you'll have the ability to create an account and have an electronic wallet, so you can save your credit cards for future payments, you can set up recurring payments through the portal if you have an account, email and text notifications will also be available through the account if you recreate an account, but most importantly, we'll be able to drop the credit card processing fee that we're currently charging, the city charges 3% for credit cards through the web portal, we will be able to drop that down to 2.5%, so we're going to save half a percent for every resident transaction that's done with this upgrade. And the best part about all this, it's zero cost to residents for us to do this, because we're already clients of theirs, we're one of their larger clients, and they were very happy to provide this to us.
Yep, absolutely. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items, minutes of regular meeting held October 6, 2025, requests from Relay for Life to waive the administrative fees to host their Ladles of Hope and Chili fundraiser event on January 27, 2026, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall, bid for camera system upgrades at the Friendship Center, administration recommends a low bidder Worldwide Technical Services, Inc., bid for professional services for improvements at Hicks Park Phase One, administration recommends a low bidder KAB Enterprises, Inc., purchase of six replacement rugged lap tops for the Windows 11 conversion from CDWG, amount not to exceed $20,700, upgrade existing e-payment services agreement with Point and Pay LLC, this agreement shall be for a period of five, excuse me, five years, at no additional cost to the city. And the last item on the consent calendar tonight is renewal of professional services with Agara Health, Inc. to perform social work services for the Westland Police Department, amount not to exceed $9,045.92 per month, term of the agreement shall be effective immediately and will be valid through September 30, 2026. Moving to payment of voucher.
Is there a motion? Is there support? Motion by Councilman Wishart, supported by Councilman Hart. Before we get into discussion, there was one question regarding a voucher item, Director Black, if you wanted to take that?
Thanks, through Chair, basically, anything that mentions DEI on the vouchers should be community engagement, and that'll be corrected going forward to reflect that.
Thank you, Director Black, appreciate it. Is there any discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Is there any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item number one, approval of purchase for a total station crash investigation measurement system from Leica Geosystems, Inc. for the police department, total amount not to exceed $24,080.40.
There's a motion by Councilman Hart, there is support from Councilman Hornbuckle, is there any discussion from the maker?
Just interested to have the Chief explain, let's get one up there for everybody.
Yeah, Chief, please.
So, when I first started law enforcement, the traffic investigators for like major crashes would actually lay tape and use pad and pencil. In 2011, when I was in the Detective Bureau, our traffic bureau got their first total station, it's the lasers and does all the, kind of maps everything for you, kind of like the scene. In the Detective Bureau, we also used it, very rare occasion, but it was something we were, we would call the traffic bureau in to do it because we weren't trained on it, but it would make things much more efficient, so if you have that road closure for a major crash, it's sort of four hours for them to, you know, roll tape and lay tape and measure everything, they could set up this total station, it like, they do it so quick now, probably within 90 minutes, two hours now. We got upgraded one in 2015, but that's now, that one's now 10, 11 years old now, so we started looking around, Sergeant Perez spearheaded this, to get us a newer total station, it's not in the original budget, so we started looking for a grant, and we found a Wayne County grant for $20,000 toward it, the other $4,900 is going to come out of our drug forfeiture account, so there's no effect on our current budget.
Okay, great. Any other discussion from the maker? Any discussion from the supporter? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes.
New business, item number two, approval of purchase of the urban SDK license for the Westland Police Department to enhance traffic team efforts, agreement will be effective immediately until June 30, 2029, city's initial cost will be $20,472, cost to increase to $27,297 annually beginning July 2026.
A motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilwoman Baumann, any discussion from the maker?
Chief, I just assume the cost increase is based off of the contract adding escalator, is that correct? So, yeah, so the original 20,000, because it's not in our budget, is going to come out of drug forfeiture account, it's for the rest of this fiscal, our fiscal year, and then each year after will be a full year, and that's why it's more expensive than the remainder of this year.
So, that covers the 7,000 that Mr. Warren was asking about?
Yes.
Great. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the supporter? Any other discussion from the council? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing and seeing none, motion passes. All right, we will now move on to public comment, everyone speaking before the council shall do in a civil manner, speakers should refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly conduct of the business meeting, personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, or other speakers, or members of the public that do not promote civil discourse. Comments shall be directed to the Chair and not to the people in the audience. The Chair shall call to order any person who is being disorderly by speaking when not having been recognized by the Chair or is being disruptive to the proceedings. If any person, after being called to order, continues to be disorderly, creating a public 13 disturbance, the Chair may order that person be removed from the meeting immediately. Is there anyone on my left? Yeah, Chair.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Sullivan from the Westland Historical Society, and we haven't taken an opportunity, but we wanted to take a minute to thank the council for approving the ARPA funds to build us a new parking lot at the Westland Historic Village Park. It's open, it's being used by visitors to the village, we had a lot of students and families come last weekend for homecoming pictures, parking lot was full. Come check it out at two Halloween events this weekend, this Friday night, October 24th, we're hosting our 10th Annual Adult Ghost Hunt, this Historical Society fundraiser partners with Great Lakes Ghost Hunters of Michigan, and allows participants the opportunity to look for paranormal activity in all of our historic buildings at the village. There's still some tickets available on Eventbrite, and you can find the link at our Facebook page. On Saturday, October 25th, the Halloween fun will continue with the Halloween Spooktacular event from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The village is going to be open with ghostly tour guides in the Not So Haunted Houses, spooky stories by our resident storyteller, cider and donuts, candy corn, a costume contest, pumpkin decorating, games, plus more. I heard the 100-year-old fire truck is scheduled to be out and about in the village that night. This family-friendly event is free, for more information, check out our Facebook page at Westland Historic Village Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anyone on my right, public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council members, Deputy Mayor, Chiefs, named Anthony Jones, about three months ago, I started coming into meetings, and we were told that we had four brand-new ordinance officers assigned to Westland. Well, last meeting, we were told we only had two that were full-time now, and two waiting in the wings, more or less, to come on, so which one is it? Do we have four new ones, or do we have two new ones with two waiting in the background to be coming on, or, you know, I have no idea. Couple other things is, you know, people that rent homes, you know, I used to rent a home, and when you rent a home, you got to fill out a piece of paper, got to have a credit check, the whole nine yards. Problem with that is, the people that rent the homes to us, the landlords, they don't put it on our credit report, you know? I went five years and never had one time where it was on my credit report that I did a good job, and that affects pretty much everybody that rents right now, so just want to bring that up. That time of year, snow is going to be falling, and sidewalks are covered with snow, and I don't know about you, but I'm tired of seeing people in wheelchairs in the middle of the road, trying to get down the road to do what they need to do. Councilmember Hornbuckle, and I talked about this at last meeting, about the money for these, you know, walk and don't walk signs about the kids and stuff like that, I don't know about you, but I just, you know, kids don't pay attention to that, you know? To me, I think it's going to be a waste of money, I understand that we got to do everything we can to protect our children from getting hit, but, you know, I just had a kid walk down my street, I live on Harvey Street, one block off of Wayne, she walked down my street, crossed over Cherry Hill to go to her house, John Glenn is on this side of this, you know, where I live at, and she's over here, you know? So, I mean, like I said, you know, we need to do something, you know, maybe have crossing guards at the main, you know, main streets, because I know when I was growing up, I got bust if I lived across the major street, you know? And, you know, we were talking about it at the last meeting, you know, I don't know what else to do about it, you know, the school districts, they do what they want, but I don't know about you, but saving a buck is not worth a child's life, so, I don't know what you can do with that, but.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone on my left? Yes, Ms. Dale.
As you know, I'm an advocate for historical, and I just want to say that I'm appreciative of the new fencing at the historic 1820s William Gedong Cemetery, of the long-awaited parking lot on Wayne Road at the museum complex, and third, of the recent new roof on the 1856 one-room Perrinville Schoolhouse on Warren at Cowan. Recently, I took photos the day the roof was being installed on the schoolhouse, and then I went over and took a photo of the Michigan State Historical Marker, and to my surprise, I noticed a damaged post on the marker. The Moors are responsible for this damage, the cost of one post, I do believe, is $475. I hope the Moors have insurance, who would be responsible for contacting them? Through the Chair.
We can get you an answer on that. I took a note on that for you. That's it, okay, thank you, Ms. Dale. Is there anyone on my right? And anyone else on my left? Mr. Warren?
These comments of mine are about the question of freedom of speech. All council people and elected officials take an oath that they will abide by the Constitution and uphold the Constitution to their best ability. At the last council meeting, Council President, you asked citizens to refrain from using their freedom of speech in this room, whether to deal with candidates or any candidates or people who maybe run in for office, and I think that you violated your oath to the Constitution when you made those remarks, and none of the other council people defended those freedoms that we have, and in this society today, there's a movement to take away those freedoms, and I would think that down at this level, those freedoms are dear to us, and particularly dear to me, because we only get, began to get those rights as Afro-American in 1964. So, I would like to have your response and your apologies for asking folks to refrain from speaking, because that's not why you took that oath, your oath was to uphold those rights, and everyone up there, to uphold those rights, and so, I'd like to hear from you and why you would even say that, and make so remarks for folks, common folks like us, to refrain from addressing, even if it's to candidates, whether I like you or don't like you, support you or don't support you, I have that freedom of speech to make those remarks, and I think that you were totally out of order and totally in violation of your oath of office when you made those remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, Ms. Filzetti.
Good evening, very appreciative of everyone here, I had asked this a couple of times, and I think this is like the third time I've brought up about sidewalks and lighting around school, I know the gentleman brought up the safety of our children, we have jungle and high school students walking down the middle of the road, it's dark out, it's pitch dark, you can't see, there's no sidewalks, there's no lights, and they can't get a bus to go to the school, because if you live less than a mile or two miles, I don't know the exact measurement, you have to walk to school, or rely on your own traffic, which most of them are driving, but guess what, you put young teenagers on the road, and young teenagers walking down the middle of the road with their phone and not paying attention and the lighting, you're asking for the distraction to lead to accidents. Secondary, I have also brought up the homeless situation, and again, it's colder, darker out, it's getting worse out there, I know of at least three or four people that choose to park in front of Family Dollar on Wayne and Cherry Hill, they are considered homeless because they are living from their car, and it's a known situation, but it seems like the numbers are increasing, and I know, I have tried to make a positive movement going forward, and it was very nice to see garbage situation taken care of in front of a storefront, and it was posted on one of the Facebook sites, but in that picture, you could clearly see that there was a person that was homeless on the sidewalk picture, so, I don't know what we are doing moving forward to help with that situation, again, second or third time bringing up sidewalks and lighting needed for children, homeless situation, I know I've brought that up multiple times, and finally, I want to commend the speaking of the right to talk, I know it's a freedom of speech, that being said... think that down at this level, those freedoms are dear to us, and particularly dear to me, because we only get, begin to get those rights as Afro-American in nineteen sixty-four. So I would like to have your response and your apologies for asking folks to refrain from speaking, because that's not why you took that oath. Your oath was to uphold those rights. And everyone up there, to uphold those rights. And so I'd like to hear from you and why you would even say that, and make some remarks for folks, common folks like us, to refrain from addressing, even if it's two candidates, whether I like you or don't like you, support you or don't support you. I have that freedom of speech to make those remarks. And I think that you were totally out of order and totally in violation of your oath of office when you made those remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, Ms. Filzetti.
Good evening. Very appreciative of everyone here. I had asked this a couple of times, and I think this is like the third time I've brought up about sidewalks and lighting around school. I know the gentleman brought up the safety of our children. We have jungle and high school students walking down the middle of the road. It's dark out, it's pitch dark, you can't see, there's no sidewalks, there's no lights. And they can't get a bus to go to the school, because if you live less than a mile or two miles, I don't know the exact measurement, you have to walk to school, or rely on your own traffic, which most of them are driving, but guess what? You put young teenagers on the road, and young teenagers walking down the middle of the road with their phone and not paying attention to the lighting, you're asking for the distraction to lead to accidents. Secondary, I have also brought up the homeless situation, and again, it's colder, darker out, it's getting worse out there. I know of at least three or four people that choose to park in front of Family Dollar on Wayne and Cherry Hill. They are considered homeless because they are living from their car. And it's a known situation, but it seems like the numbers are increasing. And I know I have tried to make a positive movement going forward, and it was very nice to see garbage situation taken care of in front of a storefront, and it was posted on one of the Facebook sites. But in that picture, you could clearly see that there was a person that was homeless on the sidewalk picture. So I don't know what we are doing moving forward to help with that situation. Again, second or third time bringing up sidewalks and lighting needed for children, homeless situation, I know I've brought that up multiple times. And finally, I want to commend the speaking of the right to talk. I know it's a freedom of speech. That being said, we are all adults, and I think the people that do choose to make an effort to be here physically and present wouldn't abuse that situation. So I don't think that was a necessary statement. I think we curb that possibility with the statement that you make originally, and it's on the paperwork that we received. I don't think the needed political comment was needed. So hopefully, we can resolve that issue going forward. Have a great night, guys.
Yep. Chief, I'll have you address when it's comments from the administration. Okay, is there anyone else in the audience? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we will move on to comments from the administration. Chief, if you can just take a quick second, you wanted to address something that was brought up here, if that's okay, and then we'll get to Deputy Mayor Godbout.
Thank you, council president. So on that one, the social media one recently with the trash and the guy laying on the sidewalk, we were made aware of that pretty quickly after we sent an officer out there. He was offered services, talked to, and he told the officer to leave, leave him alone. And that guy walked, he did walk away, our officer didn't push it and just drove off, but did check out his welfare, he did turn down any kind of services.
Thank you, chief. We will now hear from Deputy Mayor Godbout.
Thanks, council president. And thanks, everybody, for being here this evening. Tonight was a pretty exciting day with the ribbon cutting and the opening of Wayne Road Bridge. I'd like to thank the residents and business owners for their patience during the closure. And I'd like to extend a special thanks to Wayne County Executive Warren Evans and the entire county team, who work closely, we work closely with during this project that was completed ahead of schedule. We've had multiple road improvement projects in recent weeks, including the resurfacing of Middle Belt Road between Van Born and Michigan. Wayne Road has been resurfaced between Warren and Central City Parkway, and Warren Road between Middle Belt and Merriman. The Vinoy Palmer intersection improvements are set to begin soon. Construction includes road resurfacing, new ADA-compliant curb ramps, sidewalk upgrades, high-visibility pavement markings, and landscaping improvements. The annual trunk-or-treat will be held this Wednesday, October twenty-second, at five-thirty at the Eighteenth District Court parking lot. Kids twelve and under, accompanied by an adult, are invited to dress up in their favorite costumes and enjoy trick-or-treating from creatively decorated car trunks. There'll be plenty of candy, fun activities, and a safe environment for everyone. So don't miss out on the Halloween festivities. The rain date, should it be necessary, would be the next day, Thursday, October twenty-third. Sharon already mentioned the Spooktacular, so I'll skip by that one. The Mission to Mars has reopened after we did some preventive maintenance last week. You know, we're committed to keeping the parks safe and, you know, protecting the investment that we've made in those. So periodic maintenance scheduling is necessary, and we appreciate the residents for being patient with us as we did that maintenance on the Mission to Mars. And that's all I have this evening. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office this evening?
No, always good to be with you, but no comments tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now hear from our clerk, Shannon Immon.
Thank you, council president. As we get close to Election Day, I just wanted to share some important news regarding the election. I wanted to let our registered voters know that we will be conducting early voting for the November fourth city general election inside the ballroom here at City Hall. Early voting will be offered from eight-thirty AM until five PM on Thursday, October thirtieth, through Saturday, November first. I would also like to remind voters that earlier this year, excuse me, we realigned voting precincts. So your precinct number and polling location may have changed. All voters were mailed a new voter ID card and a postcard notifying you of these changes. If you're unsure of where to vote on Election Day, you may call our office at seven-three-four-four-six-seven-three-one-eight-five, or you can visit the interactive precinct map on our website. You just enter in your address, and your precinct number and polling location will pop up. If you're not already voting by absentee ballot and you want to vote by mail, it's easy to sign up. You can fill out an application and request to be placed on our permanent ballot list. If you've already received an absentee ballot but have not returned it, please be sure to sign it and get it back to us as soon as possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Immon. We will now begin council comments this evening with Councilman Jim Hart.
Thank you, council president. I'll be brief. Just to reiterate, the veteran meal program is in full swing. We're up to about a little over two hundred applicants right now. So if you have your letter at home, please send it in. If you don't have your letter at home, I'll be clear. I was told that I had to make sure I communicated the website clear enough. It's www.wayne, as in the street Wayne, hyphen Ford, F-O-R-D, so W-A-Y-N-E hyphen F-O-R-D dot com. Did I do that? Is that good? All right. So it's wayneford.com. There is a link right in the middle of the page. You'll see an eagle graphic, and underneath that is the registration link. So do go to that, please get registered. Reminder, cutoff is November nineteenth at five PM. So please get that registered, or if we hit a limit we find that we don't have enough funding for, so we're not, you know, scary for that right now. But don't wait to the last minute, especially all you vets. If you're like me, remember, if you're on time, you're late. You gotta be early to be on time. So get in there and get that filed in. You guys know better, anyway. And that'll be it for me, council president. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hart. We will now hear from Councilman Wishart.
Thank you, council president. Make it short. Go Lions. Let's get over here.
All right. Next up, we'll have Councilwoman Emily Bateman.
Thank you. I definitely want to thank a lot of the questions today from our residents. I don't know that I have, personally have all the answers that you asked about, but I've written them down, and we'll see what I can do on that. And maybe someone else will have some better answers than me, so I apologize that I don't have all the answers on that. But I definitely bring, appreciate bringing them forward. I will make one mention that I did go to the Spooktacular last year. I was actually sort of involved in it. And I would encourage people to check that out. It was actually a lot of fun for the kids and, and actually the adults that went. I think they had a lot of fun, and I know there's some good stuff going on, different planning on it for this year. So definitely encourage people to go to that. And if you haven't entered, I know that the Inspire Theater has running their Something's afoot is their play right now. I don't know that there's any tickets left, but it is one of those things where, you know, I really encourage people to kind of pay attention to the Inspire Theater. And check, because sometimes there's seats that get made available or things. But I really encourage people to take a look at our Inspire Theater, because they do do a really, a really good job with the productions. And then last, I just, I do want to remind people that the Wayne Road Bridge did open early and under budget. And I think that that is something to be commended. As painful as it was, and I was one who actually had to rearrange a carpool for my student, or my children, because we normally just went straight up Wayne Road for many times, and, you know, to add that extra fifteen minutes to arrange a carpool for so long was not, was not fun. I agree with that. So I definitely want people, you know, it did come under time and under budget. And now we get to really work on helping these businesses in that area. So I'm excited, you know, continue to do that. And I think that's all my comments tonight. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman. We will now hear from Councilman Hornbuckle.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Just want to comment on the school bus, the discussion we had last week. Great discussion, great ideas. I did reach out to some of the people at the school board and some of the teachers in the area to get some ideas. I thought it was very productive. Nothing major came out of it just yet, but I think I got the wheels spinning. So I think that partnership between the city and the schools is strengthening there by collaborating. So nothing's concrete just yet, but we are talking and trying to figure out something that works best for everybody, make sure it's a win-win situation. I do want to bring up, I want to highlight our volunteers that volunteer for the CERT program. We had CERT training this weekend. And remember, this is a volunteer position, and eight people showed up for this training. And just to show the dedication and the excitement, and the building in the community to make sure the community is safe. So I want to commend those people for showing up, for training, and we have four new people as well that attended. So I want to give them kudos for continuing supporting your own community. Also, I want to give a shout-out to the ladies at Yosemite Church. I was able to spend time with them during their breast cancer awareness walk. I want to thank them for welcoming and sharing their stories with me. It's important to, especially as a man, to support our ladies and to hear their stories and be, be strong for them as well. And being able just to hear their stories and the pain they went through and actually feel it, I think it made me a better person, the community, to stand up for our women. And I was glad to see other gentlemen there, about five other men there, to support the ladies in our community. And the walk was really great. So all the ladies at Yosemite, thank you for having me, and thank you for sharing your story with me. Also, a lot of Halloween trick-or-treat, trunk-or-treat happen around the city. I'm not going to name them all here, but if you follow me on Facebook, Councilman Delaina Hornbuckle, I have a list of all the trick-or-treats that I was able to find around the city that you can go to. Some tonight, some tomorrow night. It's a long list, but please check it out. And I guess I'll see you in two weeks if you need me. My cell phone number is three-one-three-four-one-five-four-zero-nine-six. Until next time, I'll see you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hornbuckle. All right, so a few things here tonight. No, I folks want to get out of here. My comments last meeting were designed not to stifle anyone's free speech, but every election season, we have a cadre of candidates who come up here, and they use the podium as their personal time to campaign. And they use their three minutes to talk about the election, and to talk about what they're running for, and to talk about why people should vote for them. Now, I know in the past, we've had council members who've sat up on this dais and did that, and they got fined by the state of Michigan to do that, because on our end, that is illegal, and we cannot do that. And people have paid multi-thousand-dollar fines for doing that. We had two council members a few years back that did that and received a fine. So my intent in making the comment is not to stifle anyone's free speech, but to merely point out that it is an election season, and we want this to be the business meeting of your city council to get your business done as taxpayers here in Westland. And if we open it up to have everybody come up here and talk about the election, and we all know that there's an election going on, whomever people choose to vote for and support, that is your free constitutional right to do so. But this is the business meeting, and we try to keep it focused on the business of the taxpayers and the residents, not the campaign that is going out there between any individual candidates for office. And so my comments were merely intended to reflect that, because every election season, we end up with people who do use their opportunity and their three minutes to campaign from the lectern, and they're not addressing any city business or any events or things that are going on other than to say they're running for office and why they're running, and they're using it as a three, a free three-minute, I guess, airtime. So my intent was not, and never has been, to stifle anyone's speech. Certainly, if you want to come in here and wear a campaign t-shirt, people do that, and we can't tell you not to do that. It's your right to do that. But I do think that my comment was intended to reflect what we've seen election season after election season when we have local elections, and that is people that do come up to the lectern to promote candidates or promote themselves running for a particular position. And I don't think that's fair, because we don't have every candidate up there given an equal amount of time. And I just wanted to prevent the can of worms that we seem to open up every election season, where it becomes a campaign speech for the three minutes for public comment. So that was all, my intent was there, not in any way to stifle anyone's free speech. A couple of other things. Some of the great city events that were already mentioned. Sharon brought up what's going on at the Westland Historic Village coming up this weekend. So we've got that. So make sure to come out Friday night and Saturday for two great events. I had the chance to attend the Western Wayne County NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner last evening. So I want to thank our Westland Police Department. I know they were there in full force with a table. Mayor Coleman, Deputy Mayor Godbout were out there at the event as well. Several Westland residents who were on the planning committee for that, including Tekeema Jackson and Ms. Ruby Richard. So thank you, Tekeema and Ruby, for your work in planning that event. It was another great Freedom Fund Dinner. This is, I think, the sixth or seventh one that I've been able to attend, probably, what, number fifteen or twenty for the deputy mayor, I'm sure. But I want to thank Gene Wilson Stewart and everybody at the Western Wayne County NAACP, who put on yet another great event and made it, you know, a really important event in the, with everything going on right now and everything that people are pushing back and fighting back against. It's important to have an event like that to speak out and stand up. So thank you to everyone who was involved in planning and putting on another great Freedom Fund Dinner and supporting the cause and the activism of the Western Wayne County NAACP chapter. And then with that, Ms. Dale will come down and talk to you about the question that you had as well. And that's about all I have. If you need anything from me, you can reach out to me at seven-three-four-eight-nine-zero-two-one-four-six with a call or text on my cell phone, or you can find me at Facebook at Councilman Mike McDormett. And with that, go Lions tonight for Monday Night Football. Is there a motion to adjourn?